Well, we did finish, well, I went with him because he was working up on a roof during my consulting.
I think it's going to have to be consistency.
I just don't like him to go by someone on a roof like that.
I don't.
It could be consistent application of logic, and that's okay.
We're on the air.
Oh, ten was or eleven? Oops, we are on the air. Okay, all right. Welcome, everyone, this evening, and would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call, Mary.
Olson, Collins, Johnson, Callum, Kupczynski, Coburn, Kenopa.
Here. Okay, before we start our scheduled business, I kind of wanted to do an introduction, and if our new police chief would like to come forward to the microphone, and so maybe the cameras can be able to meet you, and our new police chief is Mario Latanzio. Did I say it right?
Yes, Mayor, you did.
Oh, great, great, okay. Well, we want to welcome you to Albany, and this is your first city council meeting attending, and we, looks like we might make it a quick one for you this evening, but we know you've had a lot on your plate lately, and the transition move from Mesa, Arizona, up to Albany, and we're very pleased to have you aboard and welcome you in our community.
Oh, thank you. So far, everything's gone really well. Everyone's been really helpful, and, you know, from the school district to finding a house, to the police department, I haven't had no complaints.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. You're going to enjoy our community, so we're really proud of it, and we're just very pleased to have you a part of our community now.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks. Okay. All right. And, first on business is business from the public. Anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, all right, not seeing any. Council, the first is adoption of the consent calendar, which is short this evening, is just two sets of minutes.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is award of contract, and this is North Albany Road reconstruction. So, Mark.
We're seeking council approval for this consulting engineering contract for the bridge on North Albany Road. The roadway is being raised up as part of the improvements, and hence the bridge needs to be raised up, it needs to be brought up to seismic standards. Also, as we're extending the new 30-inch waterline, the bridge has to be made to accommodate carrying that waterline underneath it also. Happy to answer any questions you have about the agreement.
Hey, Rich.
As I'm reading this, I see because it's lower than the 100-year floodplain, we're going to bring it up to within one foot of the 100-year floodplain. Am I misreading that?
No, that's correct. As we looked at that, the other portion of North Albany Road that we improved from Highway 20 to the railroad tracks, that also, when it was improved, it was brought up to within 100, so it's one foot below the 100-year flood elevation.
Why? Why not bring it up to what, so it wouldn't flood?
Well, bringing it up within one foot allows vehicles, especially emergency vehicles, to pass during the 100-year flood, but it's quite expensive. For every foot you increase in elevation, there's quite a bit of additional fill that you have to bring in. Obviously, with the bridge, you have abutment structures that you'd have to build, and then in this location where we're doing the work on North Albany Road, we have a lot of trees along the roadway that we're trying to preserve, and the higher you bring up the roadway, the wider the fill goes, or you have to build retaining walls. So, bringing it up within one foot maintains the road so it's passable, similar to the section south to Highway 20, while maintaining those costs. So, it's a balance between, you know, that potential for the 100-year flood and the cost.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, then Dick.
What was the process to select WH Pacific?
We sent out requests for proposals to five consulting firms, and in that proposal, we describe what we're asking them to do, and then we also describe how they're going to be evaluated on certain criteria, and WH Pacific had the best response to us. In fact, they did a similar, very similar project fairly recently, so that's how we did that.
And did they give you some idea of timeframe for design, and by that you can lead into when it might go to bid?
We give them a schedule. We say, here's when the work needs to be done. There are some new rules that the state has adopted regarding what we can look at when we evaluate, and one thing we can't look at is cost. We have to look at, it's called qualification-based selection, QBS, and so we have to select a consultant based on their qualifications, and then we negotiate a price with them. If we can't come to an agreed price on the project with our preferred consultant, we would go to the second consultant and try to negotiate a price with them also.
So, what is the schedule for design and then construction?
The construction is going to be happening in summer of 2014.
Okay. Thank you.
Getting back to North Albany Road, am I right that you need to be careful not to impede the flow of the flood if you do have a major flood?
We do.
If you build the road up too high, you're going to have a dam there, and you're going to jeopardize people upstream from the road.
That is correct, and that brings up a good point. While the roadway itself will be one foot below the 100-year flood elevation, the bridge, at the bridge, the road will actually rise up so that the bottom of the bridge is at the 100-year flood elevation, so that that can pass under the bridge, and we're not, for any flows under the 100-year flood, we're not creating a dam at that bridge.
Well, I do know, it was funny, Monday night at the concert, somebody had asked me about when we were going to be reconstructing North Albany Road, because he said a lot of people use that for jogging and bicycling and walking, and he had walked on it that day, and he said, wow, he said he just darn near got hit, you know, it can be pretty narrow at times, so. It is needed with a lot more traffic that's on that road. We do need to upgrade for pedestrians, too.
Yeah, and it, there's going to be a lot of construction up there in North Albany next summer. You'll have North Albany Road, which we anticipate is going to require a closure there because of the road work, the waterline work. We're also anticipating that the sidewalk work on Gibson Hill Road from about Broadway towards scenic will be happening next summer also. So, it's going to be a busy summer in 2014.
Wow, yeah.
As well as Main Street.
And Main Street, correct.
Yeah, wow.
So, I'll make a motion that the city award the contract for engineering services to WH Pacific for work related to design of the North Albany Road reconstruction.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Mark. Next is approval of a couple agreements, and the first one is the one we discussed last night at our Albany Revitalization Agency meeting, and Stuart, did you want to open this up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The intergovernmental agreement that is presented before the city council this evening is the, a duplicate of the agreement that was considered by the Albany Revitalization Agency last night in their meeting. It's an intergovernmental agreement with Benton County and all of the property tax jurisdictions within Benton County, and it's based upon an award of an appeal that was made by Hewlett-Packard for real market value assessments of Hewlett-Packard property during three previous tax years, and the Oregon Tax Court decided in favor of the values that were submitted by Hewlett-Packard, and therefore refunds are owed to Hewlett-Packard for overpayments of those taxes that were previously calculated on higher real market values. Also, under Oregon statute, those, that refund accrues interest from the time it was paid, and so the issue or the agreement before the council tonight is being considered by all of the taxing jurisdictions within Benton County, and the objective is to be able to make the refund to Hewlett-Packard as soon as possible so that we stop the accrual of interest. And the interest is accruing at a 12% rate, so the annual, or excuse me, the monthly dollar amount that accrues to the interest is over $77,000. In addition, for, as part of additional information, the Department of Revenue has chosen to appeal with discussion with Benton County and some input from the various taxing jurisdictions to appeal the decision of the Oregon Tax Court. This would not affect, or interest would not accrue once this principal is paid on the refund that is owed for the tax years that were decided in the previous appeal, and, but any future liability would be suspended until the outcome of the appeal by the Department of Revenue. So, the item before the council tonight is to participate with all of the taxing jurisdictions in Benton County to make the refund to Hewlett-Packard of the amount of overpayment of the property tax years in which they submitted the appeal, and thereby stopping the accrual of the interest on that owing. And as proposed, there are two methods of making, well, actually, I should mention, Benton County is forwarding or fronting the amount that would be owed in the refund, and is asking then the taxing jurisdictions to either make a direct payment to Benton County or to designate that the city's or taxing jurisdiction's portion of the total refund be withheld from the November property tax receipts, and whatever outstanding amount is owed to Benton County, so if there were a direct payment, there would be no outstanding. If we defer till November, there would be an interest charge at the local government investment pool rate. I'm recommending the city council that we actually do the latter option, which is have the refund or our portion of the refund taken out of the November tax receipts, since our investment pool includes more than the local government investment pool, we would earn at least that much, and our investment pool that's outside of the pool earns a little bit more than what the investment pool makes. So, I think that would be the prudent direction for the city council, and happy to respond to questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all right, is there, well, Charlie?
I don't have a question about that specific. But looking at page 22, I see the taxes that were assessed and the adjusted tax, and why do they vary so much? For instance, from 08, it's a little over $5 million, then in 09, it goes down to about $4 million.
And in the line that you're referring to, the tax year was 2008?
Yeah.
And in that tax year, the change, as you're describing, was a fairly large change. The difference between the original tax and the adjusted tax was almost $700,000. So, as you suggest, it was a substantial difference in the real market values between what the, what Benton County's assessors assessed to the property and what the value that Hewlett-Packard submitted to the Oregon Tax Court was the more true or accurate real market value, and it does calculate to been that difference in the assessment.
But I'm looking at the first column, original tax, and their taxes went down by over $1 million between 08 and 09, according to the assessor. And does the assessor go in and do a heavy-duty assessment of the property every year in their case?
In this case, I don't know what would have changed, but there, we would have to contact the assessor in Benton County to identify what the change was year-to-year in the assessed value.
And then the next year, it pops up 1.4 million.
Can't explain those.
Okay, seems strange, and then in 2012, it goes down to 2.7 million. Is that for all years, is that part of a year?
2012, I'm, actually, what comes to my mind is that 2000, the question in my mind with following the lead that you're describing, the question I have in mind is 2011, because the years that were appealed by HP and that were to the Oregon Tax Court in the initial action were 2008, '09, and '10. 2011 and '12, my understanding was Benton County applied the real market values that were, that were determined to be the correct values by the court. So, Mike, you have a very valid question, and I'd have to ask why the, because my expectation would be that 2011 and '12 would reflect those lower values and not just 2012.
Well, I was kind of thinking, too, until I looked at the next column, and the adjusted tax goes down to less than a million.
I think in part the answer may lie with, in the initial years, they were being assessed as a manufacturing facility, and the latter years, they were converting to commercial offices. A lot of their buildings went stagnant, and they moved people out, and that's where CH2M closed their office on Walnut, and they entered into an agreement to lease space at the HP site. So, it went from manufacturing to office.
But HP still owned it.
Huh? HP still owned it, sure.
They're getting, getting rent from.
The taxes are based on the use, sort of, yeah.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
They might have changed how they did it, because there's that next group that starts with just 2012 for another $2 million, so you add the two, and they're at 4.7. I don't know if that's, and it has any bearing on it or not.
It's two different account numbers, which sounds like different tax lots or something.
But it just started in 2012 is on that second one, so I don't know.
Yeah, I bet their taxes are two different, two different accounts, that's it, isn't it?
Or it may be, as Council Collins was suggesting, because of the different use, it established a different account, so it's split.
Factory one for rental of space.
Right, that could be a very low, that could be one very reasonable explanation.
Makes sense.
Well, that's, that's kind of a aside, I don't want to distract from the real question.
I would move that we authorize this city manager to enter into the intergovernmental agreement with Benton County.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to make one statement, that in the defense of the Benton County appraisers, this is actually a state commercial account, and it's done by state appraisers. The Benton County did not do the appraisal. I mean, their office did, you know, the work up, but they're given all the figures by the state appraisers, so just want to make that clear, that it wasn't the Benton County appraisers that made the error, or made the miscalculation.
So, does the state appraise all the big industrial outfits in the state?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Stuart. And next is executing an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT to exchange federal surface transportation program funds for state funds, and Stuart, do you want that, or is that Mark?
That's me. So, staff recommends the council approve this agreement with ODOT. This exchange of funds with ODOT is something we've done for many years, and these funds are a major source of capital funding for the city to do transportation improvement projects. The funds are, for this exchange, are targeted to primarily North Albany Road and then also the Main Street project. And in essence, we, the city does an exchange program with ODOT, where ODOT takes the federal funds that are due the city through the Surface Transportation Program. ODOT takes those federal funds and applies them to their federally funded, other federally-funded projects, and ODOT then gives us state funds, and we get 94 cents on the dollar, and the big advantage to the city is all those federal strings, or all those strings that come with federal funding does not come with these exchange funds, so we can use that money much more efficiently than we can federal funding. We can spend it quicker, and we have a lot less permitting and regulations associated with the funds. As you can see, we have saved up multiple years and portions of our funding, and we try and pool this for our larger projects like North Albany Road. The 2013, that's the last year that funding will come directly to the city of Albany. In future years, that funding will come through the MPO, and the MPO will disperse those funds to Albany and the other members of the MPO, and that process has yet to be worked out. But in short, we recommend that you approve this agreement. These fundings will be targeted toward North Albany Road and Main Street.
Second, okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next, on page 33 is an appointment to the library board, and this would be for Georgie Ann Wheeler, and this is a reappointment. The library board has, according to their bylaws, their term limit, their terms expire at, by, they go by a fiscal year, so that's the only board that we do have with the city that is a fiscal year, and we kind of discovered that about a year ago, that we needed to be doing reappointments during midsummer, so that's why this one's before you. So, we need action on reappointing Georgie Ann Wheeler.
Move affirmation of the mayor.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. And then the next one would be, since Chief Boyd retired, he was the appointment to the Lynn County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, and so Chief Mario Latanzio gets those honors. So, your first meeting, and we're already sticking you on some committees. Did you know about that? That was on the plate tonight. Okay, so we need to have that ratified by the council.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, I don't know how often they meet, but I don't think it's real frequent, so, yeah, thank you. Business from the council, Bessie, anything this evening?
So, sure, I haven't had the chance to think about it, so not tonight.
Hey, Bill, Dick? No, all right, Rich, Ray, hey, Floyd?
Just kind of a heads up, Mark and I attended the meeting of the MPO today, and one of the items that came up for discussion was the Washington Legislature did not fund their half of the crossing at the Columbia River. So, ODOT will be going through a process yet to be defined on how to reprioritize the spending of the federal funds that ODOT would have been using for our half of that bridge for other projects within the state. And so, between the act and our MPOs and our staff on the technical advisor committee, they'll be working through a process for being, or at least monitoring the process on how those funds get prioritized. Of interest to us, and some of the things that came up was continuation of improvement to Highway 20, and obviously continued investment in moving ahead on I-5, and whether it could be pre-designed, right-of-way acquisition, and one of the comments I made to the ODOT rep is, I see some for-sale signs up at the exchange up north, and it's always easier to acquire property when you have a willing seller than after somebody has bought it for investment. So, that'll be an ongoing process, but I don't know what the dollar values were in that, Mark, do you recall? It was a significant dollar value that the state will have to reallocate.
Yeah, okay, good.
You're talking about the Northern Bucrest?
Yes.
They're going to have trouble with that.
Well.
Because the people in Northern Bucrest sued them, and.
To put in the, a group of people sued them, well, they were, the original owner sold to a group of lawyers who then sued ODOT and won to have a exit at that, and so any amount of money, they're going to, they're going to take blood.
Well, I guess.
If it's at all available.
Interesting for us to monitor, and I think Counselor Coburn's on one committee, the mayor's on the other, on, as I-5 moves forward, and that's only going to be one of the many projects throughout the state that they're going to reevaluate. There's no doubt in my mind that I-5's going to move forward. I'm not sure what it's, I'm not sure what it's going to look like when it gets done, but it's not going to stop.
It could take 20 years before we see it, but that's why, I know the last meeting, I think it was last fall that we met on the, the one group I'm on, on the I-5 study, but it was more looking at trying to acquire right-of-way as it comes up for sale, just looking towards the future, so, and, you know, might not be, it could be a year, it could be 10 years or so, but just those opportunities come forward to kind of grab onto them, so, but yeah, some of that could take many years, but. Yeah, but it is, it's needed, that project.
Well, and what went hand-in-hand with that was also some preliminary designs and trying to narrow down what it might look like, so you have some idea where you do need to acquire land, so there's been a lot of work on the different designs, options.
Okay, all right, is that it, Floyd? Good, 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 and I'm glad to get an update on the MPO, so, all right, and I didn't have anything this evening, Stuart, did you? So, and Jim, I think, are you sure you want to?
I am. I've got a code interpretation issue that I'd like to share my problem with you and get your input. This concerns a situation that doesn't come up all that often, but once in a while. We have a code provision that says you're only allowed to have two dogs, but there's a provision whereby you can get an exemption that will allow you to have up to two more dogs, for a total of four. The exemption requires you not have any animal violation convictions. We have two paragraphs, the circumstance I come up with against in municipal court from time to time, infrequently, but I've got it coming up soon, is a situation where there is an animal violation, not a serious one, but an animal code violation. The offender would plead guilty and pay a significant fine, but they are terrified that upon that conviction, they will lose one of their dogs, which to them are like family members, as I guess with many of us. There are two provisions in the code which appear to be in conflict. One says that the exception to the two-dog limit set forth, blah, 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 oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong portion. The exception provided for in subsection 2, that's the extra dog, shall be revoked without the need for any administrative or judicial action in the event the exemption holder has been convicted of a violation. Sounds pretty mandatory. Then there's another one, two sections later, that says the exemption provided for herein may be revoked at any time by the manager, basically if the holder becomes ineligible. Well, you become ineligible when you have an animal violation. So, I've got one code section that says automatically it happens, you lose your right to have an extra dog, and I have another paragraph, two paragraphs later, that says the city manager may revoke it. What I would like to do is I would like to have discretion to use prosecutorial judgment in whether or not to invoke that option of forcing someone to lose their dog. I think that in the case of minor violations, it's too extreme, but I understand that it may create a potential nightmare for consistency, but sometimes you have the fight between, you know, consistency and fairness, and law enforcement people exercise reasonable discretion all the time. So, my inclination would be to exercise discretion based on individual circumstances, how egregious the violation is, and whether or not I can get a substantial penalty enough to deter future violations by fines, and in this case, it would be an enhanced, an extremely enhanced fine, as opposed to losing their dog. But I need to know, I'm charged with enforcing your ordinances, so I want to know if I'm okay to exercise that discretion, or if you want me to be strict on it. No. You know, and what an irony that I'm trying to not put the hammer down.
So, it was actually in 2009 is when we did the two-to-four dog limit, and that's when we formed a task force to make code changes then, and then how do we know we were going to turn around and do a whole year's worth of review of a code over the dangerous dogs? So, that's why I was leery about bringing up dogs, but it's, I mean, it's a very valid question.
When you talk about killing dogs or forcing people to give up their dogs, it's going to be a very, potentially a very emotional issue, and I'm concerned that in some cases, that penalty is disproportionate to the actual offense, and I'm going to come back to you at some point in the future when there's less on the agenda and suggest a rewrite for clarification on this, but in the meantime, I've got to live with it. What it's doing in the case I've got coming up next week is it's forcing a trial. I've got coming up next week is it's forcing a trial over this dog-at-large issue, for which I could otherwise get a $1,000 fine and call it good. But I'm not gonna violate the ordinance unless I have your permission.
Thoughts? Yeah, Rich, then Ray?
Well, noticing that there are several people with blue shirts on, I guess I, I would, I would say let's, let's give you the, the authority unless it is something about, you know, a dangerous dog. I mean, it's, you know, that's the rest of it. I mean, my, my lady friend is a person who does rescue dogs, and she, once in a while, she will bump up against Springfield's number. And she basically has a, an agreement with Dog Control down there that, you know, for a short period of time, you know, until she can find somebody, they gotta get it out of this place and, and put it someplace else, that there's some discretion. And so unless it's gonna cause a big problem, go for it.
The other side of the coin is, it's kind of a slippery slope. Where, where, in fact, do you draw the line? Obviously, if you had the task force that created the ordinance, I wasn't involved at that point in time. They came up with it for whatever reasoning. So if you have the discretion, that, that's great, but I'm thinking that it potent, has the potential of opening the door to other people that might wanna take advantage of that until if and when we actually rewrite the ordinance.
Well, I'm not sure that this section came about as a response to the blue issue. That's because, this is a different question. Again, and there, and it's not a situation where I'm really asking for your authority to ignore the ordinance. What I've got is two paragraphs that have some apparent inconsistency. And in that circumstance, I would rather err on the side of exercising discretion. Now, I could make a good, valid argument that one paragraph is more specific, and that it applies, and that therefore the, the dog, they're gonna lose their exemption. I just, again, it just, I know, I understand the ear, I see that, but I don't.
Yeah, this was, this part was done in 2009.
Yeah.
But the reason it was is because we had issues with some people having too many dogs, and then where do you draw the line? It was trying to kinda define it from the kennel, somebody own, having a kennel, to quite a few dogs. So that's where the committee came up with two dogs, but then you can get an exemption, make sure they're licensed, to have four dogs. And it was mostly really encouraging people to license their dogs.
And all of these dogs are licensed. I'd require in all cases that you get in compliance.
Yeah, and, but it was all, the reason it was set as a limit, because when you're in an urban environment and you have people living closer together, it's very irritating when you're hearing somebody's dog barking. And I had a phone call from somebody today that was, you know, from one neighborhood that was complaining about dogs, you know, barking. And so when you have, you know, it's, sometimes it's irritating to hear one barking for a while, let alone what if it's four, five, six. Where do you draw the line? So that's, that was the reason.
But understand, that in Albany, and I shouldn't argue, I don't mean to, but, but understand the proportionality here. In our, in Albany, if a person steals from a store and is the first offender, their customary fine is $350 the first time. I'm talking about almost three times that for a dog that wanders on the neighbor's yard. I mean, I'm getting a pound and a half of flesh, it seems to me. It's not like I'm wimping out on dealing with animal issues here. I'm just...
Ryan, yeah, Floyd?
I, I think Jim's on the right track. I think the code needs to be changed. The first paragraph needs to be, it may be, the language should be moved to shell, but that discretion is based upon the frequency and the magnitude of the prior violations. I mean, it's one thing if the dog steps off your property, hits the neighbor's bush, comes back on your property. It's another thing if he jumps off your property and goes and nails a kid. And, and so I would, I would think that the modified language to come back to us would deal with severity and frequency. If the dogs that lose all the time go to the neighbor's property, they take that into consideration. But we gotta use a little bit of logic. And so I, I would say let's, let's defer to the maybe language here and take a look at what that discretion may be. I agree, it's a slippery slope, but if the slippery slope can be, put some parameters around it based upon that frequency and magnitude and severity, I think we're okay.
Now, I appreciate it. I'm sorry to bring this to your attention. Ordinarily, I would just discuss it with Wes. I didn't think it was fair to dump it on Stuart's lap in Wes's absence, so I had you tonight. So, thank you. I have mine, I understand.
Thoughts down here?
Yeah, I would agree with Floyd's analysis of the situation. Kinda wondering where the, does the judge enter into this, or are you presenting the case to the judge?
I don't wanna get too fact-specific in this case, but in all likelihood, I will settle this case with a plea bargain and a stipulated fine. I can't see any circumstance where the judge would ordinarily impose a fine that high.
So you're meaner than the judge.
He's a bulldog.
Hey, municipal courts are red.
Bessie?
Well, I think if we're, I mean, for this case, for one thing, I know that at the time, not all counselors agreed with even having the limit on the dogs and stuff. You know, it wasn't like unanimous and everyone agreed, because I know there's a lot of people out there with more than two dogs. I, you know, or four. But in this case, only because you suggested we come back and relook at the code, because right now, the way the ordinance is reading, you know, I mean, it's kinda like, why put in the law if you're not gonna, I've said that ever since I got on the council. Why put in the law if you're not gonna enforce it? In this case, and I don't care about the fine, I mean, the money. I mean, that's not what I think we want the public to hear. Well, let's just go get the money and not worry about the law. If we're gonna come back and, and relook at the code, I'd say we use a little discretion this time, but we need to take care of it and take care of it soon, because it may come up again next week, you just don't know. So, all right.
I would have a tendency to agree. I think, I think the message that we need to send out is, each time something comes up that, that shows maybe a flaw in our code or something that could be amended, we ought to be looking at doing that so it makes sense, not just sticking with the language, but sticking with the intent and what's fair and equitable. And if we're doing that, then we're erring on the side of being fair to the community.
Direction?
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Any staff? So, okay. Our next meeting is July 22nd, which is gonna be at the Boys and Girls Club this time. That's for a work session. And then our regular session is July 24th. And thank you for attending, but we're adjourned. Thank you.